Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pam Smith, Mayor of the City of Vader. It's my privilege and honor to call this official, the scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:02 PM on the 27th of September 2018. We're grateful to all of you who've taken the time to be with us this evening. We're glad to have you. But we're also grateful to have our council members present. We'll proceed at this point with our roll call. Invite our city clerk to present that for us.
Judy Costello, here. Jason Daly, he did call in and ask if please be excused. Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons. He also called in to ask to be excused. Leona Sander Hunter, here. And Mayor Smith.
Also present. At that, despite the absence of two of our distinguished council members, we do have a quorum, so we're legal to proceed, which we will do by inviting all to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Would you like to invite them?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a few items on our mayor's record. I would, one that didn't actually make the printed page, involves our newsletter. As you hopefully are aware, when you receive your utility bills every two months, there's a newsletter inside. And I wanted to point out at least one item on it. That has to do with our preschool. For those who've been wondering if it's been functioning, and pleased to report with general public verification, that there are 14 children signed up from City of Vader at that preschool. There were enough to actually make two classes. So they have an early and then a later one, with seven in each one. And they're inviting one or two more children, if you're aware of any within our community, to sign up, because they like time from 7:00 to 10:00 per class. So it's positive reporting, and a very successful program has been brought to pass by the Castle Rock School District. With that, I wanted to note for council's information that we have the annual Risk Management Services Agency Conference, at which if we have an attendee, we receive a $500 certificate. And our city clerk is willing to go, but I think she would defer if this year a member of our city council would like to go. There is a scholarship available for it, and they cover your hotel lodging fees for one night. It's in Shalane. But if we don't have somebody present representing the city, we don't get the $500 stipend. So I just opened that to you for your awareness. It's on October 17th, again in the City of Shalane. So if you're interested, feel free to let myself or Jill know. Okay? That, I wanted to make note that it's been brought to my attention, the city hall's attention, that there have been some overweight trucks using A Street. And we're grateful to those who brought it to our attention, and we are responding to it. We knew that when that street was completed, we'd need to put some overweight restricting signs up, which we haven't done. Just wanted the council to know that we are going to press ahead with the acquisition of those signs, and make sure that they're consistent throughout the city. So you'll be hearing more about that in weeks ahead. I did also want to mention as item number two on your agenda, that we've been working closely with officials at the Assembly of God Church here across from Weary Park, who I know you're aware had some drainage issues, which I think have been exacerbated by the modernization project that's just been completed. So if you wanted to let me know, as of two days ago, that they have been working with a local asphalt company that have agreed to pave it, but before fire the paving, they're going to install a drainage system that will take the water that's draining from their roof down the spout into a catch container, and it will be then piped across the street into the ditch, the barrel ditch along the north side of Sixth Street, heading towards the railroad tracks, which is where it goes already, but there wasn't a catch basin. And they're confident that that will take care of the drainage issue. Plus, they'll end up with a new paving. So if any of you are concerned about that, I figured you'd want to know. If you have any questions, you can talk to me afterwards. Last but not least, I wanted to add, for your awareness, I think you've been informed that the current freshwater line that runs from our sewer system to our drinking water system line breaks regularly and often. And so it's become necessary to replace that, maybe about 1,000 feet. But we're going to set in motion a fix for it. So that's about to start on Tuesday of next week.
Where is this line located?
It's by the lab builder at the waste treatment plant. Runs north about 1,000 feet. How many times you think it's broken?
I can't even remember. It's just crumbling right now.
So we're finally getting to it, to so you know. All right, and that's all that I had to bring to your attention. Let's proceed now with our council reports. Anybody has anything you'd like to bring up?
I actually have no report other than I saw the cement truck of Tracy's go down Main and around today, which I was happy to see when it came today, so, rather than on the New Street.
Yeah, that's good. There's some sensitivity to that. Ben Yips? Good news? All righty, and let's proceed with the approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 9/27/2018 as written.
We didn't want to delete that.
Oh, I'm sorry. With the exception that we are deleting number five for tonight.
Okay, referred to motions submitted by Mrs. Hunter to approve the agenda as written with the specific deletion of item number five, council discussion on home-based business regulations. So do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, approval of minutes for our previous city council meeting.
Make a motion to approve city council meeting minutes for 9/13/2018 as written.
Okay, Mrs. Costello submitted the motion to approve those minutes as written. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval, September.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. First half of September 2018, an amount of $234,821.69. And the end of September 2018, $9,663.08, for a total for September 2018 of $244,484.77.
Okay, Mr. Schei has made the motion to approve the voucher expenditures in amounts noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're now down to our special reports. We're, forgive me for not recognizing you, we're always honored to have our Distinguished County Commissioner, Paulie Jackson, with us.
Say "Distinguished."
Yes, and it's true. We are very grateful to have you. The podium is yours.
Well, I thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Nobody's ever called me distinguished before, so it's a little, so. Hey, we're happy to be here tonight. Thank you, City Council Prime, to update you a little bit on the transit measure that's coming up on the ballot in November. I've got some handouts here, and they'll be available here on the table after I leave, and I'll please pick one up, because there's a full explanation as to what, excuse me, the ballot measure is going to look like. And it gives you a history, a brief history, of where we started, where we're trying to get to, and the reasons that we're working towards that. We've been in front of this council at least two other times, that I recall, with last year. And the discussion has been about expanding transit to the entire county. You may have seen some news reports about that, if you've listened to the radio up in the Centraya and Chalice, you may have heard myself along with Derek Wojcik, gamers from Twin Transit talking about this. The idea behind it is that as we are working to basically save Lewis Mountain Highway Transit on the east side of the county, we determined that it was time for us to look at the possibility of expanding transit to the entire county. And so that's what this is all about. This information that I have for you tonight, council, you already have it in front of The measure is to expand public transit service throughout Lewis County, and if it's approved, it could authorize the extension of a 2 tenths of a percent sales tax to parts of the county that present presently within the boundaries of Chehalis, Centraya, and Napa Vine. The reason for that is that Napa Vine opted not to participate, and Centraya and Chehalis are already paying the 2 tenths of 1 percent sales tax. So when you go to shop in Chehalis, when you buy your goods, your services, you buy an automobile, you buy furniture, buy clothing, clothing, a part of your sales tax, there's 2 tenths of that that is going to support transit in Centraya and Chehalis. Okay? You don't even miss it, because it's a penny on a $5 purchase. That tax revenue, along with grant funding from federal and state governments, is what has kept Twin Transit in business for over 40 years. Lewis Mountain Highway Transit, you may have seen some of their buses, their small buses and some of their vans come through this area. They run three round trips a day from Packwood into Chehalis and back. As a matter of fact, if you've been keeping up with what's been going on with Timberland Library recently, there was a meeting in El Waco last night, and they drove three hours. Lewis Mountain Highway Transit brought a group from Randall over, because they're trying to work to save, yes, they're trying to save their library over there. That's a whole nother issue altogether that the county is very, very interested in, and we're very attuned to right now. But Lewis Mountain Highway Transit provided that bus service for them, so these people could get over there to talk about saving their library. Here's the issue. In June of 2019, Lewis Mountain Highway Transit will be ceasing services on the east side, because they cannot afford to continue to pay the matching dollars for the grant funding they get from the state. For many years, it was at 5 percent, and they were able to make that payment and get their grant funding, but the state decided they wanted to raise the amount of match percentages for 501(c)(3)'s. Well, the problem with that was that Lewis Mountain Highway Transit, because that's the only funding they get is grant funding, they cannot afford to continue to pay the match. As a matter of fact, the owner of the service, Doug Hayden, had actually talked about using his social security to pay for it. You can't let that happen. So he approached Twin Transit. When I became the commissioner two years ago, he approached us at that point, and we discussed the possibility of incorporating Lewis Mountain Highway Transit. But in order to do that, we have to pass a tax base in the east end in order to pay for that. So as the conversation moved forward, we decided, what would it look like if it went to the entire county? Now, many of you may have heard this before, and I'm just basically following up with some of that information. This will give you a very good explanation, far better than I can give to you, about what we're trying to accomplish. My reason for being here tonight is that I've gotten some phone calls from some people around the county, asking me to please explain what the 2 tenths of a percent sales tax means, and how does that affect, you know, our residents. The minute you say tax in this county, people want to run for cover. And I understand that, you know, nobody likes new taxes. But this is not a property tax. We are not going to increase your property taxes. That's not what this is about. And the county has no formal stake in transit. Our job was simply to call for the conference where Mayor Smith attended, and it was voted that we would move forward to spread this, spread transit to the entire county. This is how it works. You're already paying 2 tenths of a percent in Chehalis and Centraya when you go to shop there, and it's paying for Twin Transit, for their buses to run. Lewis Mountain Highway Transit only has a grant base. They do not have a tax base. That's one reason that they're going to have to go out of business. What we want to try to do is expand that 2 tenths of a percent to not only include Centraya and Chehalis where it is already, but we would branch out and include the entire county, where if you bought goods and services in Vader, you would pay an additional 2 tenths of a percent sales tax on whatever it is you're purchasing. And it amounts, folks, to a penny on a $5 purchase. You won't even miss it. But that tax revenue will allow us to build an infrastructure, build a system, along with grant funding that we get, in order to provide transit down here in Vader, and of course, this whole area down here, Vader, Winlock, Toledo, Ryder Wood, seven miles in proximity to each one of these communities. We want to be able to provide services for our seniors, for students to get to Centraya College if they want to go to college, for people to get to work that don't have transportation to get to work. This is one of the things that we believe will connect our communities. So when your ballot comes in November, there's going to be a question there asked, and it's inside here, in fact, it looks funny to you. We've adopted Resolution Number 18-230 concerning a sales and use tax to finance public transportation within boundaries of the Lewis County Transportation Benefit Area. And if you approve this, you're authorizing a sale and use tax of 2 tenths of 1 percent to be collected, in addition to any other taxes authorized by law. Now, there are not, there aren't any other taxes at this moment. So the way this is going to work when these ballots come out, you folks here in the great city of Vader will have an opportunity to say yea or nay towards transit. If you say yes, you can expect a slight jump in your sales tax whenever you purchase something in the city of Vader, or in Winlock, or in Toledo, or if you go over to Onalaska, in those areas over there in Mossy Rock, you can expect to pay an additional penny on a $5 purchase. That's the way this works. And so I wanted to clear in confusion, because I had several people contact us, there was a question about the fact that Lewis Mountain Highway Transit has gone back and they have re-applied for their grant funding. And suddenly, a lot of people threw up their hands and said, whoa, wait a minute, we thought they were going out of business. Why are they applying for grant funding? Well, they're going to be in business until June of 2019. Twin Transit needs them to apply for their grant funding, because that's the base that they have to run their operations. By adding the sales tax to it, it allows us to absorb that into Twin Transit and provides, continue to provide the same services and increase services. It's just the way it works. We've had some people ask us, well, how, you know, if it's a business, how is that sustainable? Well, it's government. It's all part of government, the way government does business. And we subsist on grant funding and tax dollars to get this done. Now, there's other questions that people have asked us, and well, we don't want to, we want to wind up like Seattle and Tacoma. You've probably read about and heard about the horror stories with sound transit up in, up in King County and those areas like that. First of all, we're not King County, and we don't plan on being King County. We're not talking about light rail. There's a move up there, and there's an attitude up there, that they need to get people out of their automobiles, because the Seattle Tacoma area is choking on its own population, quite frankly. And so they're trying to get people out of their automobiles to get that congestion off the roads, and they're trying to push people more in transit, and that's the reason that they're, I just saw the budget for the city of Seattle, they're going to, they're continuing to pile money into their transit system. That's not what this is. This is a very simple system that will subsist on grant funding and tax dollars. And somebody asked me if we could guarantee that the tax rate would never go up. Well, there's no guarantees in life, and I'm only going to be a commissioner for so many years. I don't know what will happen 10, 15, 20 years from now, so there's no guarantee that it wouldn't ever go up. But we have been surviving it on Twin Transit on 2 tenths of a percent sales tax for a very, very long time. And my anticipation is that we will continue to be able to do that, because sales tax revenues in the county are up, and they continue to go up continuously. A lot of it having to do with traffic on the I-5 Carter. And that's where an awful lot of this is going to be funded, by people coming through the area and stopping and doing business, you know, along the car. That's another reason why I'm really, really focused on this end of the county, that we get the South County area developed, and begin to have an opportunity down here to provide opportunities for people to shop, to live. I know that here in Vader, you, Mayor Smith, you guys have been building some homes down here, there's permits being issued. Winlock is beginning to boom a little bit. Napa Vine, it's going nuts up there on Haywire Road in Napa Vine. People are building homes. The home market, the housing market is beginning to level itself out. And so good things are happening, and tax revenue is up. So that's, in a nutshell, and I hope that I've explained it to you as simply as possible. If I have, this piece of information right here, it's really nice printed, nicely colored, little piece of information, and there also is a website on here, that you can go to the website and get more information. This hopefully will explain to everybody in here. What I'd like to ask the city to do, if you would, is I'd like to leave these with you, and if people want to come by to do business, if you could give them out to them. Your ballots are going to be coming out here in the next, I think, couple of weeks, two or three weeks. I think you'll have them, they're going out on the 17th. Our intention is by the 17th, we're going to begin to do a radio campaign for about three weeks until the November ballot, until people get a chance to vote. Every opportunity we have, we'll talk about it on the radio. But I think this is an important time for Lewis County. This is an opportunity for us to finally get connected all across the county, and provide services that will connect us with Thurston County, Calles County, over in the Pacific County area, and other places like that, where we can have continued transit for those folks that need it. Many people look at that and say, well, I don't, I drive a truck. Well, I do too. I'm not giving up my truck. But there are folks out there that we, you can do something nice, if you pay a penny on a $5 purchase, you're going to do something nice for your neighbor. That's what this boils down to. And I can tell you, there's a huge contingent of senior citizens that live in Lewis County that are very excited about this, because they'll finally have some freedom and independence to be able to go to their doctors when they need to, to go shopping without having to wait for a son or a daughter or a grandchild to pick them up, take them to Walmart in Chehalis, or wherever else we might see a Walmart come up, maybe one in South County. I'm excited about the future. This is one piece that I believe will drive us economically. It's not a cure-all for everything, it's just one simple piece. And I would go ahead and tell you this, that if this measure passes in November, on November 6th, I think, is election day.
6th.
6th. November 7th, you're not going to see buses rolling through Vader. I'm sorry, it's not going to happen that fast. But what we will do is Derek and I will start coming to you folks, and we will sit down and find out what's feasible as a route for the folks here in Vader. What looks like it needs to be, it needs to happen here. In other words, where should we put the stop? What's the easiest place so that people that don't have, you know, they'll have automobiles, but they have mobility, they can get to a bus stop? What does that look like? Where can we put it? How can we get that done? We're going to come back, and we're going to sit down with you folks and talk to you about that. We're going to be engaged with you, we're going to continue to talk to you about this, so that we set up routes that are going to be workable, that they make sense, and that they do the most good for the people that live in this area. So with that, anybody have any questions?
Okay, we have a question from our city clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Sure. Wondering about Ryder Wood. I know they're not in our county, but...
I thought they were. Ryder Wood's in our county.
No, they're in Calles County. But I was wondering about them, because they're kind of at a dead end out there, and I know there's a lot of elderly people that have a similar situation. Is that, is that any thought?
Yes, there is. We, in fact, we have included Ryder Wood in our conversations. Now, I didn't know they were in Calles, and so there obviously will have to be a conversation with Derek about how do we get that done. But because of their proximity, everybody, Ryder Wood, Vader, Toledo, Winlock, all within seven miles of each other, it just makes sense for us to talk about Ryder Wood. So there may have to be a kind of an interlocal agreement that we put together with Calles County. I think the Calles tribe has a transit service down there.
Yeah, they do.
Yep. They're very much aware of what we're trying to get accomplished, and they're very excited for us. I think it'd probably be an easy thing for us to try to figure that out.
Yeah. Probably put a stop just on the city limits of it, because I think that's where Lewis County starts.
No, not the county.
Pretty darn close.
Sure.
That's where a lot of senior citizens.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. City Council, I appreciate it. Folks, we're excited about this, and like I said, I'll leave this information up here. Please pick one up before you go home, share this with your friends, and if you have any further questions, look on the website, you can call me, Tor House, whatever you need to do.
All right, thank you so much. Now, it's a privilege to hear a special presentation from Representative of Civil West, Matt Wadlington. Mr. Marlin.
Gawker.
Hug.
Gawker.
Gah. Pleased to have you with us both, in our community. So we'll turn the time over to you. How long do you think?
I'm going to make the presentation real short, so most of my time is whatever questions you guys may have.
Perfect.
How much time do you have? I didn't get this all set up ahead of time, because I didn't have a power strip for the computer, so I didn't want to leave this running. Did you send out plans for everyone to have a chance to look at? Did everyone get through those and mark them all up and have lots to get comments for us?
Have a chance to look, but you're looking good. Good reading.
Looks like your new office. There's maybe a new office down there.
Wednesday, Tuesday.
Relocated. Let's tell Jill they can relocate down there, the button office.
Well, I apologize, that may not be working at all. Like I said, it was a very short presentation, it was mostly stuff you had seen before. I went over the, kind of the process diagram of how the wastewater treatment plant works. Wastewater goes into the headworks, it gets screened, takes away most of the solids, then goes into the basin where it gets aerated, goes through a series of four different sub-basins, then goes into a UV disinfection, where it kills all the microbes that are left over, and then back out to the Olakaw Creek. One thing that's likely going to change as a result of some tests that we were doing down there at the plant right before we came up here today, was we tested the water to see how well the UV would work as a disinfectant, and it did not work very well. It was, we were looking for a UV transmissivity of about 35 percent minimum, and the water that we were seeing down there was 17, so we were about half of what we needed. Now, we know that as we go through this process, the wastewater will get cleaner, but we were hoping to see something that was already at 35, so we were confident that moving forward, it was, it would be at least what we needed. And we didn't see that. And so what we're likely going to end up doing is switching to chlorine as a disinfection, which is what you're using now. The cost, the capital cost is going to be very similar, might even be a little bit cheaper, the long-term cost will probably be a little bit more expensive, just because you're going to have to keep buying it, whereas UV, once you bought it, it's, all you're using is electricity. So in terms of capital costs, it's not going to make much of a difference, but that'll be a change, will be a change from the plans that you're looking at there in front of you.
So no UV tubes, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah. And we're going to keep looking at it, but it's unlikely to give us the confidence. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Marlon Gawker is the president of our company, he's the one who's actually going to be stamping the design plans. So he also stamped the wastewater facilities plan, so he's been involved. While I've been up here getting to talk to you guys a bunch, he's been sending Kuzbay.
Yeah. They let me out every once in a while, so I'm excited to come up and meet with you.
So again, the process design, I just walked through that. Down here at the very end is the ultraviolet disinfection. Now, we'll likely have to change to chlorine. This is a schematic, this is the same thing I showed you guys before, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about it. This is what we all want to see. This is our cost. This was the cost from the 2017 facilities plan, and this is where we are now. So we are, we are up a bit from our construction subtotal, about 15 to 20 percent. And we can talk about some of the reasons why that have gone up, and some of the, why we, what we can do about it. There's a construction cost, this is taxes, contingencies, and bringing the numbers from a 2017. a 2018 number to a 2020 number where the construction will happen. So that's this jump right here. So what we're seeing right now is that 4.6 million is our estimate that will be needed in 2020 to build the plant. Schedule-wise, we're here in October. Next month, we have to submit a cost estimate to Ecology for the funding application. In December, we'll be submitting the final plans to Ecology. Actually, we'll be submitting the plans to Ecology in November. By December, they have to be approved. Ecology publishes the draft offer list in January. In the spring, Ecology approves the environmental review process. In July, Ecology publishes the final offer list, which is really what we're looking to see where we land. In September of next year, hopefully the contract with Ecology is finalized, and in fall of next year, we'll go, we'll go out to bid. In December, we'll get bids back, and in spring of 2020, construction starts, and then construction is done in the fall of 2020. And I know that Kathy had a sheet that I think she handed out to everybody that has a schedule on it that hopefully matches pretty closely to that. So that's my presentation. I hope that you guys have looked at the plans and looked at this and have some questions.
How come the cost of construction doubled?
It didn't double, it went up by about 20%. There were some aspects that we weren't anticipating when we did the preliminary.
It went from 2,000 to 4,000. That looks like pretty close to double to me.
We had a subtotal in the facilities plan of 2.7 million. Right now, our subtotal is 3.4 million.
Okay, look at, site construction went from almost...
Oh, I see, you're talking about this line item?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Marlin, you want to talk about that?
And there's a number of things that play into that. So looking at that one individual line item, there was some stuff that wasn't, like Matt said, expected as a part of the project, the waterline improvements, to bring the waterman in with the fire hydrant, the access road improvements, the building improvements are larger than anticipated, and those are, honestly, eat up a vast majority, but then there's a bunch of little additional ones. There's also a difference in that every year, we estimate about a 3% increase in cost, which is just the cost of the world rolling around, and that adds up relatively quickly and is a big portion of the difference that you see between these costs.
Yeah, the difference from our 2.79 to 3.4, and some of these have moved around as we've gone through and finalized where things go, but there's a couple hundred thousand dollars of just inflation between 2017 and 2018.
On the same line, general construction went up about 100,000. Headworks went up over 130,000. Lagoons was stable. Site construction more than doubled.
Yeah, now, a lot of the initial costs that we were working with in the facilities plan were costs that were done in the 2015 facilities plan, and we just took those costs and moved them forward two years to get our 2017. And so a lot of the numbers that were, that we worked with on the facilities plan were held over from that 2015 facilities plan, and that was one of the ways we were able to work through that, but...
And something else that happens in this design process, I mean, you start out at, I like to call it 100,000-foot elevation, and you look at, what do we need to do? And we put costs and estimates around what needs to be done, and then as you get further in the design process, you start to come closer into the ground, and you go from 100,000 to 50, to 30, to you're right above the ground, and each time you get closer, you actually finalize the equipment. I mean, some of that initial early stuff, they, hey, we need to put in a headworks, that's going to be this kind of piece of equipment, and this kind of piece of equipment, and they might take an average of what those might be and put it in there. We actually go and say, this is the actual piece of equipment, and here's the cost associated with that piece of equipment, and then what drives and what needs to be implemented to allow that to work. And sometimes it requires more electricity. That's one of the things that's hitting the site construction, is we need three-phase power. And that's unfortunately a cost that until you have the actual physical pieces of equipment identified, you can't get to that extent, and you can't know that until you get there. So there's always this iteration, and we try to get it tighter and tighter, and the goal is, is by the time we get to the final designs, we have a very sound level of comfort around what those costs are. That being said, we can't control the market, and I mean, the battle with China over sales and international trade can drive up oil prices, which drive up our liner costs, which drive up pipe costs. So there's things that are just outside of the control, and we build in those contingencies, which is why we have the sales stack contingency admin line. That's an addition that then puts it to that 2020. Those are the contingencies that allow us to say, here's what that in-project cost is going to be based on this new information, and it changes.
Kathy, did you have some?
Kathy, you're in Department of Commerce. I don't want to speak for you guys in your estimating, but I did want to note that I remembered the 2017 estimates were a couple of years old, and just the construction climate right now, what I'm seeing with a lot of other projects, the contractors are so busy, and bids are coming in really high, and so just in the past couple of years, you know, housing construction ramping up and other things ramping up, cost estimates are definitely going up. So I think it's, I feel more reassured to see that you have accounted for that.
And along those lines, we have given the set of plans that you're looking at, we've given that to a contractor to have them go through and give us a budget estimate to verify costs, so we have a more true estimate than us. We have a contractor who will likely want a bid on this eventually, so.
Okay, I'd like to talk about the building.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I'd like to talk about A-100 and A-101. If we're not going to have the UV lights, can we eliminate the carport? Because right here is...
So there's a garage portion of the building, and then there's, and what you're calling the carport, is that just the open one over the UV?
Uh-huh.
Yes, we will be eliminated.
That would be eliminated, okay, that was question number one. Number two was, how much do those lights cost, but we're not going to use those now? One of the other questions I have is, is I personally think the building's too big. We have one person who works there, and I'm trying to figure out why he needs an office, a laboratory, a storage room, and is there a tub and a shower in the bathroom?
No.
It's five feet, come on, there's a five-foot shower in there?
There should be a safety.
There is, and then part of what drives the requirements on a building like this is EPA, there's specific sizes of areas that have to be provided for labs, and then like the shower, there has to be a safety shower. Some labs, they put a drain in the middle of the floor in the lab room, and then you've got a shower that's hanging in the middle of your room. It's, it works, but you have a restroom in a lot of other facilities that'll put that safety shower in there so that you've got it contained, it's easy to clean and maintain if you need to use it, it's readily accessible, and it's right there, and it meets all the rules. So it's, in my opinion, a little cleaner and a little bit nicer than having a shower in the center of your lab room, because that also puts the potential for moisture getting everywhere if it ever gets used, you have cabinets, you have other stuff in there. I would recommend that it's in a location that's contained and easy to clean and maintain, and so that's why I would recommend the shower being in the restroom facility, it's the other natural place for it to be.
Also, and, I'm just a busy little person here. Also in this building, I feel like we could move in. This is a, well, this could be city rental property. On E-10, we've got a washer and a dryer, we've got an oven, which I'm thinking is for lab work. Washer and dryer, what was the other thing? Refrigerator, is that lab work also? Help me out here, because I'm thinking this is all building a house for somebody out there.
There is a refrigerator, because there are needs to store stuff.
And what is the washer? What would the washer and dryer serve as?
Clean the beakers and the glass.
Well, the washer and dryer is for cleaning different, if you're cleaning your lab, you've got towels to wipe things down, you're potentially getting messy when you're out working on stuff.
You do know that I'm going to go out there and check the cleaning after this all goes through. Whoever our Public Works person is out there.
And keep in mind that this is preliminary, if you guys have comments and say, why do we need a washer and dryer? You know, make the comment, we'll look into it, and if we have a valid reason, I'll respond and let you know, but we took most of this lab list from other wastewater treatment plant labs, and so if it's not necessary, we'll be happy to take it out.
And also, do we need a welder? We put in power out there for a welder, is there a reason for that?
A lot of facilities, that's one of the things that they have, they have things that they need to work on. Now, if you guys don't want it, it kind of, the washer, the dryer, the welder, maybe you're not interested in the actual physical washer and dryer, or maybe the physical welder, but is there the potential that Public Works could use a welder to fix something? And maybe down the road, you acquire a welder, but you have the plug, and maybe you don't get the washer and dryer if they're not required, but maybe you have them plumb, so that if you do determine that it would be nice to have, it's in place, because if it's not in place, then it gets more expensive to put it in at a later date.
My only thought about that is, is we have a shop. I'm just throwing this out to you guys, this is just, I did, I looked through all of this, so this is just questions.
One of the things that we talked about this last time I was here, about having a garage space in general, was, you know, if you have the opportunity to have that space, my guess is you will use it, and it will, you know, be used. If the cost, if the funding comes in where you want it, and this is, this is an addition that doesn't cost you money, and I'm not saying it will or won't, but if it is, then why not go for it and put it in there?
A couple of comments. Number one, there are people in Seattle that don't have a washer and dryer in their house, so it'd be hard to justify one down the sewer in case the guy has a dirty rag. What does he do now? Does he, what's he doing with the stuff now? Does he take it home, or? Does anybody know what happens? Does he have a washer and dryer down there now?
Nope.
Does he have a stove? And you're right, I think this might be a place to go. He gets one out.
There is a lot of equipment that he should have that he doesn't have. I'm not saying a washer and dryer is it, but like, the oven that he has is not sufficient. It's, he's, their kind of, Ecology is kind of letting it slide, knowing that we have this upgrade coming, so they're kind of letting it slide. Some of the equipment that we have, like, we don't have a dishwasher down there, he doesn't have a way to sterilize and wash his jars and beakers and stuff. He doesn't even have running water right now that he can use, so, you know, there are some, some of these things are, he is working well below standard with the lab that he has. I mean, personally, washer and dryer, I don't see a need for that. I see him using paper towels, you know, to clean things, but that's just my personal opinion, but I can see, welder, I don't know about that, but, you know, I can see, I know a washing machine he needs to be able to clean his equipment properly, and, or the dishwasher, I'm sorry, the dishwasher. And I know the shower is one of those safety things that, you know, I was concerned about as well, yeah.
And then there was also, you had a question about the computer space, and the reporting that the operators have to do on the lab work that they do is going to be a computer entered thing, and so having a computer station is necessary for a treatment plant, whether or not it needs to be a separate office space like that. We can, we can look into minimizing that if that's the...
And how much storage are we anticipating? Because we don't normally, I think, buy up chemicals for like, a year.
But we will be...
But I wonder if we're, yeah.
We will be changing the type of chlorination, so instead of, right now, the city buys a 25-gallon drum of chlorine and puts a pump into it and feeds it out. What we're going to be doing is going to be the least-cost alternative is a chlorine generator. And so you have salt tablets, so you have bags and bags, and a pallet of salt tablets that you feed into it, it uses that salt and generates chlorine and then injects that. So there's some storage for those chemicals. There's also, we're going to have a backup parts for the aerators. That'll be part of what the contractor will supply, and so having a storage room to put those parts in.
Do you have a guesstimate of what this is going to cost the 220 households, or whoever is in greater, increased rates?
No, we don't, because we don't know what the funding package will be.
Have you had to ballpark it? Is it going to go up to 110, 120?
It could go anywhere from zero, zero increase, to who knows what.
So zero is pretty unlikely.
Not necessarily. We are pretty well in the range, there's a possibility we could get 100% grant.
We're shooting for it.
So we're shooting for it, but we'll see.
I have a question about the appliances. Are we talking a household refrigerator, a Maytag washer for dishes? A 30-inch range for the...
No, this is all lab equipment, so it's a lab-style refrigerator, a small and probably better suited to hold a constant temperature than your home refrigerator. The oven is a laboratory oven that's used for laboratory purposes, not a Maytag range. And again, the washer and dryer, we can get, we can look to get rid of that stuff. I'm fine doing that.
We would rather present to you a list of everything that you could potentially want, and I would rather pull that stuff off than not give you a list that could be all-inclusive, and then we get to the end, and you do happen to get the 100% grant, and oh, boy, I wish we would have this, this, and this in here. So it's an iterative process between us and you guys to what needs to be there, so mark it up, get us that information back, we can validate and verify it and adjust it appropriately.
Is this standard for our size, that we would have seven parking spaces and one handicap?
The parking is a code requirement from...
That's a total requirement, so we have...
It's a code requirement based on...
Based on the square footage.
You have to have a handicap parking space, even though the operator, their duties require them to be mobile, you still have to have a handicap spot.
And visitors aren't really advertised to come down and visit, that, are we still need an effort?
That's what it is, and actually, that, another thing that I just, I thought of, you guys were talking about a waterline down to the plant, and one of the things that we have to do, another thing that is a code requirement, is that a fire hydrant has to go down that side, which requires a large, like, an eight-inch line running down the road all the way to the plant.
We'll have a nice trench pre-done for...
I wish we could encourage you to hold out, but...
We have been holding out for about five years.
I don't want to encourage you to do that, because I understand it has to be done.
Yeah.
But yeah, make a nice trench, because maybe it'll save some costs.
Did we work out the details of Burlington Northerns? We have not, okay. That was one of my other questions to see since Matt was here. At this time, I've exhausted my question. At this time, I've exhausted my questions until I read my spec book.
Well, I, I encourage anyone who has any other question.
One question I've got, based on these, is there a deadline when we need to have all of these thoughts put together in a little package? So that we can modify.
Well, our submittal to ecology will happen in the middle of November. So that will be our final set of plans to ecology. I anticipate they will have some comments. We'll have to modify it. Their approval date is the middle of December. And so until the middle of December, I consider these plans flexible.
So it will be moved, the council that would seem to want to nail down some of your thoughts and suggest you.
Do we anticipate another visit in October? Or November the 18th appears to be the next, according to the schedule that Kathy, I think that it matched up. Are you anticipating another visit to see us?
That was the date that you were going to submit a design to ecology.
Yeah.
So I think we have to be prepared.
I, I'm more than happy to do so if you guys think there's value in it. I'm, I'm more than happy.
Or just a long list of our questions. It's not scheduled at this point and it wasn't included as another meeting in the packet. But council can ask them to do that, but it would.
I think we could just submit a list, right?
Well, then one thing that I would recommend is to submit your, your comments. As we get closer, we can send you another updated set of documents that has your comments as well as the new updates in there for you to take a look at and, and make sure that your comments have been addressed.
So, okay, go with our council member first, Linda.
Okay, previous meeting I had concerns of the few people, the 200 plus people that are actually on the sewer that are going to be paying for this. And you mentioned that it's going to be broke down in stages. But one stage has to be done before we can file for that for the next stage. How do the stages break down?
Well, we're doing some unit upgrades during the first stage. And then we're going to see how the actua turns out and then see if the additional treatment for copper temperature and.
Ammonia.
Ammonia are needed. So those would be additional design processes that we, so that would be phase two if one, two, or three of those bits are needed. Is that right?
How many years down the road would that decision be made on the additional?
I would guess that after operating for two years, we would know whether or not that next step is, is necessary.
And, and I think council member was asking for clarification about are the costs for those items in phase two included in this amendment?
Not in this number. We, we did have some cost estimates for it in our facilities plan. The, the cost for that phase two, I think, was $700,000. So it was, it was a much smaller scale of, of construction necessary, but, but not insignificant.
Yeah, actually, so 100,000. So this is only for phase one?
It's only for phase one.
So this isn't even the end of it?
Well, it could be, it could be, we don't know.
It could have.
We don't know.
Accomplishes what the hope that it could be.
And if that phase two needed, my recommendation would be to go back to ecology. Hopefully get a good funding offer sometime. Mayor, I, um.
Kathy, Kathy and I spoke today, yes.
Did you have a question you wanted to ask?
I did. I would like, I would like for Kathy to explain to everyone about the income that is required to qualify for our community. And in the past, we haven't been able to do it.
You want to go ahead?
There's a couple of different household income measurements that are relevant here. One of them, I think the one you're thinking of is the eligibility for the community development block grant program. For many, many years, you guys have been eligible, right now you're not. And that's based on how census data is being collected. So I have heard from CDBG staff that they're hoping that they're going to get updated HUD data. HUD is the parent federal agency of community development block grant. To redo those numbers to see who's eligible. We're hoping by the end of the year, we will know that. So that's an eligibility threshold for CDBG. However, your, the first funder that you're going to apply for is ecology. And what ecology, they're, they're interested in a little different number. They're interested in your median household income. So if you line up all of the incomes of all the families in town, you know, highest to lowest, whatever one's in the middle and half of them are below, half of them are below, that's the median. So right now, Jill's probably seen this, she's working on the ecology application. They list the median, this is the, ecology appendix K of their funding application. So appendix K, you can imagine how thick this is. Vader's median household income is 39,880 cents. Now, why does that matter? It matters because they, they will do a hardship calculation. They, they don't want your monthly sewer bill to be over a certain percentage of your median household income. I believe, and your sewer, monthly sewer right now is 16?
74, 72.
So.
72 a month.
So.
Every two months.
They look at, you know, over 2% of your median household income going to sewer rate. And then kind of the next cutoff is 3% or 5%. So what they're saying is that you need to, you're, you're already, your rate is already higher than 2% of the median household income. So that works in your favor for getting a grant offer. I don't know how much grant they have. I don't know, you know, how you're going to rank as they go down the list. Will they have enough to pay for the whole thing? I think it is potentially. I think it's a good possibility that you could get grant for this. If you don't, or if they don't have a lot of grant money, that's when we're going to care about CDBG. So some, there are some cases where ecology might say, hey, you're eligible for grant, but we ran out. And in that case, they will allow you to go out and find grant from somewhere else and replace their loan offer with it. We'll know that when the draft offer list comes out in January, February. And that gives us plenty of time to determine eligibility and all that before we would apply for the CDBG money in June.
Thank you.
Yeah, so a quick question for you. So are they taking into consideration that there's, again, a little over 200 people that are involved in this? And Vader's got what, 621 residents? So you've got 400 people out there that aren't on the city sewer. So are they taking into consideration that?
I think, just, I believe that what the deal is, is that there's 2.5 people per house or something like that. So I think there's around 250 connections and 600 and some people. So I believe all the houses that are on sewer in town, maybe there's a couple that aren't.
There's two.
There are some that are.
Yeah, yeah, they're right, yeah. So the way that that is addressed, so the ones that aren't on the system, they're not considered because they're not on the system. When they do the hardship analysis, they look at what your overall budget is, what your current rates are, what your rates would be if you had to take all the loan. So that's where they would go. 4.5 million dollars divided by 20 years, divided by 12 months, divided by 250 connections. That's where the number of population comes into their hardship analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I was wondering if you can, like the building and everything down there, can you not give us just the absolute basic we would need rather than a catalog? Sorry, with the bare bones?
We certainly could.
And it's legal? I mean, whatever, you know.
Yeah, we, we certainly could. Again, what, what we're trying to do is, is, is give you something good. So that if you get all of, all the grant funding you want to cover it all, that that's what you get. If, if, if we say you're going to get a, a 40 square foot shed as your, as your lab, then, then that's all you're going to get. Even if you get all grant funding, you can't go up from there. You can only go down. And so we're giving you something at the top end. And, and if you don't get the grant funding, then we'll go back and say, okay, this lab building is, is pretty extravagant for, for what they need. So we're going to cut out the.
You could reduce all of that. I mean, we wouldn't be committed to try to take advantage of that potential.
I do, I didn't know either.
I can say la, 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 la about that comment. It, it should be a modest proposal.
She's got to be in her ears.
It is modest and, and we, we can certainly defend everything that's in there and say that this is, this is what should be in. If, if it needs to be smaller because the funding isn't there, we can make it so.
And also, we don't know what the bids are going to be. The bids could come in 6 million dollars. We don't know. And so in that case, then you might do some scaling back of the project and then you have to try and get additional funds.
My feeling is that the building is not the main driver of the four and a half million dollar cost. No. We could start cutting all kinds of corners there, only save a few thousand, not 100,000.
Okay, it's seven o'clock here. I know our time is getting constrained here. One more minute.
The public meeting in October, where's that? Is that here, is it in Chalos?
That's the, the CIPA meeting that we're public input. And I know you guys have been working very hard for it.
We have, we have not come up with a date yet though. Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, more than likely here. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention there, since I've been watching, laboring through this. It's like giving birth and I wouldn't want to contemplate that, but it's incredible. Many of you may not be aware that for the past seven years, we've come to this point where the total is 4.67 million. Bear in mind that our neighbors just to the east, Toledo, their facility was about nine or 10 million dollars for 20 more households. And so Civil West needs to really be commended for coming in and doing something that no other engineering company that I'm aware of came even close to. So plus ecology. Of course, yeah. I just want you to remember that this is bare bones to begin with. And they got, ended up with about 70% grant funding, which was extraordinary at the time. But we're going to do everything we can to see if we can get 100% back. I've always been a glasses full type of person, full of optimism and hope. And I think we've come this far and I think we're going to be very successful. So I agree with Joe, but sometimes you want to put stuff in just in case we get 100%. But if we don't, it's good to know. I learned tonight, we can back down if we want to.
And you can back down even, even into, once, once you sign a contract with a contractor, we can go and we can.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Well, some of the stuff that's kind of like I've seen is paving. Maybe you reduce the amount of paving and it's, it's a gravel areas. I've seen that done and that's a way to save a little bit now, little tiny savings.
We did.
But, but it's, I would rather see you guys get 100% grant and get what would be great for the community at basically no cost.
Yeah, sure. And I was intrigued by some of the comments about some of the equipment in there. But every city, their public works facilities have to be accredited. And we've been flying under the radar just because ecology has known what's happening, like Jill mentioned. But there are so many little subtle things that we've just not had that sound like they're luxury items, but in reality, as you were referring, are necessary and required. So I prefer that we have a facility that we can be proud of and yet sensitive to those who don't have washing machines in our community. I'm sure there are some.
May I say one more thing? I hope Jill doesn't mind this, but I know Jill is, this application is due in two weeks to ecology. Jill is working on it. Jill needs time to work on it. I'm just putting in a plug for, you know.
Thank you for that.
Whatever support you guys could be giving Jill on this. I know, I know Matt's given her information on it too, but it's, it ain't easy for these applications.
And that's not the only projects you've worked in. So in case you're wondering about the competency of the city administration, it's really outstanding. So I just throw that, thank you Kathy for that outside perspective. Excellent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. [inaudible]. And, and again, any comments that you guys have as you work through those more? And maybe compiling a vigilancing report on or feel that we have to be direct.
Okay, well, as you're dissembling yourselves, then we'll proceed with our council meeting. I know that we'd scheduled a planning committee update and Scott Gross was committed to providing that report, but I don't see.
I don't see him here, right?
So we'll have to be officially declared unexcused.
Okay, I'll let him know.
We'll proceed with our next presentation to be our park board update. And we do have the chairman of our park board present. That would be Kelly Shy.
All right, so I have a few updates. We'll start with Warden Park. We have, at the jail, we've had Judy Cusello help out and get community members together to complete painting of the jail and some repairs along with soon the pavilion, probably weather permitting. Was it about this weekend possibly?
Karen, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. You guys were shuffling around, here's a lot. Jail has been painted and repairs done and it's looking absolutely beautiful. And we're talking potentially that this weekend, weather permitting, the pavilion will begin a fresh coat of paint as well.
Yes ma'am.
I'm just verifying.
Yes.
Because you're heading that one. So, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have had some unsafe, a glider, a piece of playground equipment that was removed over at Warden Park. We had Stephanie, a member of our community who also is applying for one of her vacancies on park board. She came in and she's been talking with us about getting a kids' community library box and slash memorial put up in front of Warden Park as well. And that's in planning stages. McMurphy Park, we've had Elena Knight kind of start spearheading the whole doggy cleanup stations. And she's had wonderful help from everybody with putting awesome, the bag disposal containers together and her signs came in. I don't know, but she, she ordered some signs and they're in and she was just so excited. I talked to her about it today. They're in, yep, they're here. She, she was able to get three of them. And because the majority of the stuff had been donated, I think she spent a total of like $62. That was the amount that we had approved. Yeah. And two of them will be going into McMurphy Park sometime this week. It sounded like she was telling me this upcoming week. We also have, we're submitting here packets. There is a drawing of a proposed working draft of the direction vision that we have in McMurphy Park. And it's kind of a general layout of things that we kind of like to see happening there, which has been stuff that members from the community have brought to us, that we've seen from past, past plans and kind of incorporated a mixture of everything in there together. Obviously, as we start working on, once we've gotten the okay that this is looking similar to what the direction that we would like to see the park going, we'll be able to start working on things like the septic and water projects. So that's, and that has been ran by Ken here, trying to get all the estimates and everything for the water and sewer planning down there. He's been doing a wonderful job. And after that, I guess, trees. I have little packets that I gave you guys. We were told that you wanted some suggestions regarding trees for along the H Street project. We had, at our last meeting, we had decided that the eastern red bud and totarian maple were two options. They're both, as you can see, the totarian maple hits a max height of 20 feet. They're both, as you can see, the totarian maple hits a max height of twenty feet, um, with a max, potential max width of fifteen to twenty feet. And the same thing with, um, the eastern red bud, there was a spread, a max height of thirty feet with a spread of between twenty to thirty-five feet. The soil content and everything, we picked this one especially since we know that it's more adaptable in the types of soils. The heavy clays, high, high acidic acidity. We know these trees specifically too, were also on pre-approved city lists of trees that can go and grow under even power lines, so we know that these are not gonna be getting really, really tall, because we were, I've heard that there was a lot of concern about the height of these trees. The leaves themselves are approximately four by four at mature, full mature height, from what I had read. And there's also, um, going with the ideal of, not ideal, the, uh, the church that made the donation had said that they would like to see season with their trees as well and trying to accommodate that sum. Except with the eastern red bud, we have this beautiful, in the springtime, it'll have a beautiful pink blossom. In the summertime, it's a really nice green and in the fall, it does tend to go yellow. And the totarian maple, it's, is green and it is red with some orange and yellow. So, green in the summer, spring and, um, yeah, the red and orange. So, and it's supposed to be really clay, drought friendly and everything as well.
You know, are these gonna be planted next to the sidewalk or further down toward the swell or where do you?
So, from what I've read with, what we've read with these actually is that it's ideal that these trees can actually be planted right next to the sidewalk if we wanted to. Obviously, we don't do that.
The roots go down.
Yeah, they, they're, they're not a widespread root. These are trees that are meant to go next to sidewalks. However, actual placement, it is more ideal to go ahead and set them back at least two to three feet. But we didn't design that, we were just asked to bring a selection of trees for everybody. So, but that is something that we did consider as well. They are very friendly with going up against sidewalks, maybe roads and everything as well, so.
That's a members of the commentary, thank you for that wonderful support.
Thank you.
Getting things done.
Question, question on the eastern red bud, it says twelve feet apart for planting, I'm assuming each tree or whatever. Do we have any idea what that length is?
So, if you look on the back page here, our current, yeah, our, so currently, this is the old, yeah, no problem. This is the old before construction street and where the trees were, the spaces in between the trees were approximately thirty foot to fifty foot gaps. And that was for the one, two, actually, one, two, three, four, five. There's at least five, couple of the little ones in between. Yeah. So, there is plenty of space to have that twelve plus foot spacing, even with the new construction, because it's actually bumped out and everything as well.
So, before I ask, you're going to, was it a price list?
Uh, all of these trees fell within that hundred dollar price range, similar to what they had approximately. It's, we've seen them as low as about like, I'd say in the seventies to that ninety-nine dollar range. It just depends, there is a pre-approved list of, uh, for in Washington State of nurseries that actually carry some of these trees even. And, um, so you would know that you are getting that type specifically and they fell within that range, so it just depended on the nursery and everything. So, we were sensitive to the, trying to keep within that budget as well per tree.
Who, who will be, this is probably not park board stuff, but who will be planting these tea trees? Will plant them, okay, and pick them up?
Yeah, yeah, they are not involved.
No, I understand the council's saying, so, so we're going to plant these trees. We know how big these trees are when we pick them up?
Good question.
That'll be a price.
That's part of the price.
Price determine, the younger the tree, the cheaper it'll be, the older the tree, the more expensive it'll be.
And from what we're reading, at least with the eastern red bud as well, it's actually ideal to do planting in fall, winter and so. So, we are still right on the cusp of where if we got them relatively soon, it would be a fairly good time to go ahead and do that planting still, so. If we went in while we still had, if somebody was physically able to go in and pick out the trees when they still had those fall colors on, we would even have more of an idea of exactly what that tree would produce in the fall as well, if that's something.
We should bear in mind that to do this trench, we're gonna be getting, it's a back hole, right? Would that not be possibly usable for?
You're gonna be wanting probably some type of an auger, because unless, you're gonna have to take out a lot of ground with that back hole.
And we don't want to run over that poor baby grass.
Yeah, and we don't know what size we're getting, so we don't know what size the root.
And that's gonna be something you're gonna want really to read up on is, is how deep the hole needs to be for the root system or something, because if those roots aren't, if the hole's not dug deep enough, you're gonna.
Below the frost line.
You know, the roots they start coming up and we'll start.
And that's something the nurseries would be able to tell you guys.
Yes, they'll do their thing.
Thank you very much. Have we consulted the owners of the adjoining property?
Not at all.
Not at all, do we plan?
The owner's welcome.
Uh, but do we, do we plan on communicating with him at all to?
No, I think we should keep him in the dark.
No, no, I'm asking, you know.
Oh, great.
The hundred dollar tree, how big is that?
It depends on the nursery. Some of the nurseries, the, they usually range between four to seven feet approximately. But again, it depends on the nursery, it depends on the tree, the demand, lack of it, you know, that, there's a lot of variance there, variables there. But they are all on those, uh, Washington State pre-approved nursery lists as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Do we need to get approval for the?
No.
McMurphy Park?
Um, you, you can ask.
Oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. So, I guess with, going back to McMurphy Park real quick too, with that plan that we proposed, um, my understanding is that we needed to kind of get a general okay as to whether or not you guys feel that, that draft that we have is kind of on the right track. Obviously, a lot of that is, um, it's gonna change as projects come along and obviously we have to get approval of those changes, but I guess we kind of are at a point where we will, we can't really continue on with a lot of work, it sounds like, until we have gotten a general okay with some things, so if there are any changes needed, then.
I would like to start trying to knock on some doors and ring some phones and.
Start working towards.
Start trying to figure out what we need to do and, because it's gonna, this is gonna be the biggest portion of this whole project is trying to find money and stuff like that, so it's gonna take a long time and work is slow right now with me, so I got a lot of downtime.
We need this guy busy.
To do stuff.
So, if you had any questions about anything on there?
I've noticed that you've added, uh, new roads.
There is one pullout and that would be the road that would go along where the, if there's eventually camping and even the RV area, that would be specifically for that, taking it to RV, um, camping, the RV host and any amenities that would be set up over there. That would also keep them all off of that main loop and, so it's kind of a pullout camping.
Maybe I should insert at this moment that what Kelly is indicating on park board chairman is that this needs approval by the city council for insertion in our comprehensive plan, the essence of it.
Well, no, no.
Well, I thought we needed to have a plan here in case we were to seek funding.
This does not need to go in the comprehensive plan, because the park stuff is, it, this is not detailed enough to be part of a comprehensive plan and you wouldn't put this kind of detail in a comprehensive plan. What this, what this is, is before they go to the next step, which would be trying to figure out how to do some planning, some, and get a professional to look at, okay, what, what can we really, can we do this stuff where we wanna do it? Does this make sense, you know, and do some real planning? They need to get some funding, but, I mean, in order to do that, they need to know that they're headed in the right direction. That is all this is, this is not, yes, this is exactly what it's going to be and council gave them, okay, now they're gonna go spend all this money. No, it's not that. What they count, what park board needs to find out is, council, do you think they're headed in the right direction? If something like this looked right to you, um, if you look at it and go, no, 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 this is just gonna ruin everything, we need to talk about this some more, then now would be the time to say, we need to talk about this some more. But if you look at it and go, I think they're on the right track, yeah, I think, go ahead, move, move forward to the next step. That's what, that's what I'm telling them that they need to get from you guys, uh, to make sure that they're headed in the right direction. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I think that, yeah, it probably does. I was, I didn't mean to infer the photograph gets in, but the essential elements need to be itemized in the comprehensive plan. Like, if you want to have a restroom facility.
Not necessarily.
I'm, how can I be so confused? Comprehensive plan. Are you sure? Wow.
It's the not-so-comprehensive plan.
The, the comprehensive plan and the plan, the park plan are two separate things.
But it's included.
The park plan can be included but is not required as part of the comprehensive plan. What's required, the park plan, okay, the park plan is what's required in order to get grant funding. Because if you apply for grant funds, they're gonna say, we wanna see your plan, your park plan. So, the, but it's not necessar, not typically this specific. It's typically, my understanding of a park plan is, like we've seen in the past, where it just says, McMurphy Park, we're gonna do some improvements to include restrooms and possibly camping and some other improvements. It does, it can be very general. Your, your plans, your big facility plans, like your park plan, needs to be very general because you, they know as you get into the details that it's going to change, things are gonna change. So, if you say, we want five RV spaces and you put that in your park facility plan, you're, you're limiting yourself and you're, you're making it so you can't make any changes later. It has to be five.
Okay. Maybe over.
That's why there's all the illustrations, that's why there's general areas, blocks, out, not specific equipment, not, otherwise, we will be limited to that equipment specifically as well at this point.
Let me inject here, and since I did, as I mentioned in the park board meeting, met with Matt Mariachi, the Lewis County Land and Wealth Director, who's soliciting from each of the small cities in Lewis County, two of our goals for insertion on legislative agenda that he's gonna give to our elected officials, that'd be Ed Orka and John Braun. And so, I met with him and he wanted to know what our two top priorities were and I put the sewer plant and he's gonna put that, we can bring it to the attention of John Braun and Ed Orka when the time for funding solicitation happens. And then I threw in the park board's desire to put in a shower, water type facility. And he said that would qualify, as other cities are doing similar things. And so, he's put that and he evaluated that roughly at about five hundred thousand, which was a little less than. So, and he said that it would have to be part of, mentioned of our comprehensive plan in order for a legislator to consider funding. Now, it doesn't guarantee that we're gonna get funding, but when we approach them, they will ask, is, oh, so this is part of your vision for the commandment? And then we could approach them and they all are apparently, according to Matt, going to be accessing greater funding sources. There'll be flex, more flexibility on what projects they can select. Uh, but he did specifically note that when I mentioned the RV pads and camp sites, that would not qualify for that discretionary funding of a legislative level. So, I guess, I would like us to make sure that the general things, like you said, be included in our park section of our comprehensive.
And I, I reviewed over that and I was actually in there. So, this would, that would be part of the smaller breakdown of everything versus this is the general review. But, yeah, I actually checked today and that is in there.
Okay, perfect. Did, um, you want to hear a comment?
Any other questions?
So, what do they have to approve?
Seems okay, keep on going.
I mean, that's what they need.
That's what we want to hear.
Any census from council as far as, are we headed in the right direction?
And I like the idea that you're, you're wanting to get the water and the septic addressed and that's something you're, you got your heart set on and you're looking forward to getting in the middle of that and, and I'm okay with that. I don't like the location of what you're thinking, but I think those folks will probably tell you.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I'm not happy with where it's at, but.
And, and I'm okay with, I personally am okay with this. I don't, I think it's great, I think you've done a lot of my work.
I think it's wonderful.
True.
I'm so excited that this is moving.
Yeah. Okay, no dinner, this is wrong.
I'd move a few things around, but in general, it's great.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we anticipate there's gonna be a lot, in fact, we took a combination of going out there and old plants and stuff and kind of merged them together and with the research that Ken has been doing and everything too, we just, we're working until we can, we can get the professionals in there and help us with the rest.
That's fantastic. Okay, well, then you could probably, you see this, but I know the council needs to decide which tree you're.
That's later in the, it's on the agenda.
It's on your line, I'm.
Of course, I'm just.
We're not even in the city business yet.
I know, we're still in reports.
Okay, with that, then let's quickly jump to our city business. Our council, we consider park board. Oh, yeah, so we did, I have a council member with some concerns about.
I wanted to just question something here, we have to jump back up to the planning committee. Something that has come out in this week's paper, could someone explain that to me? Have you read this to?
Yep.
Could you explain to me what this is and, and I guess the comment that, um, the planning committee is holding the meeting? Um, and what is it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't read that paper.
Uh, planning committee realizes that the city needs to have a common set of goals regarding where and what it wants to be in the future. Because of this realization, the planning committee would like to invite the public to attend this brainstorming session on October the second. Uh, the planning committee has called a special meeting to be held on October two at six P.M. located at City Hall to discuss ideas about the vision for Vator. Okay?
What, what that is, is the planning committee had a, a meeting, well, their regularly scheduled meeting, uh, last week. Uh, and we had two guest speakers, one was Matt Mariachi and the other was Fred E. Vander. Fred E. Vander was the, is, uh, planning direct, I believe, planning director for Lewis County. Uh, he also previously worked as a planning director for the cities of Tenino and city of Rainier. And, uh, he has been, uh, has been communicating with the other smaller cities and helping us with some kind of general planning and having some meetings. And at one of those meetings, he said, if you guys ever need help, you know, working with your planning departments or whatever, um, I'd be more than happy to come and try to explain, because it's a big process, understanding the planning department. And, uh, so we took him up on that. So, he came out, um, talked with the planning committee and he kind of gave them a real brief overview of the planning process and the, all the different documents that are involved in that. And one of the things he suggested, um, because we said, okay, so this is all great, but what does that mean for us as a planning committee? And, uh, he said, what, what does that look like? What, what kind of things can we actually do? And he said, his first recommendation would be, does it, well, first, does the city have a set of goals? Like, what they wanna see for the city? What, where do they picture, what do they picture their city to be as, you know, or, or if it's in process, what do you want it to be in five years or ten years? What do you want your community to look like? And everybody said, we're not aware of any goals written down anywhere. And I, I reported that I wasn't aware of any either. And he says, he says, one of the first things you need to do, uh, in his recommendation is to come up with some common goals for your city. And, and he says, the planning committee doesn't necessarily have to be the ones instigating that, the council can be doing it, you know, who, the mayor could present it, but, but it's something that everybody would agree on. Um, that, yeah, these top, these three statements say what we want about Vator. We want, I'm just throwing some things out here, this is not necessarily what we want for Vator, but we all, we wanna keep it, preserve its historical nature. We want to, uh, keep it, um, quiet and, uh... We want to keep it quiet and not too industrial. You know, I don't know what the common statements would be, but, you know, maybe we want to grow more and have huge, huge high rises, you know, whatever those common goals are. He said, once you have a set of goals that everybody can get behind, then you can start working on small things to accomplish that. And then, also, as you go through your comp plan review, like what we're working on right now, there's so many different elements of the comprehensive plan, that you're supposed to be having goals, I think is what they're called. And you can look at your common set of goals and go, do the goals in our comp plan work together with the goals that we're trying to accomplish? And if not, then you can tweak them. So it's a guidance thing. And so, the Planning Committee said, you know what, we really like that. We like that idea. We don't think anyone's done it yet, so why don't we have a brainstorming section and see what people think, and come up with some suggestions, and then we'll bring that to Council and say, hey, here's some ideas that we've come up with, what do you guys think? And, you know, can we come up with something that we can use kind of as our guideline?
So did they see the master plan?
The master plan.
What's it called?
Comprehensive Plan.
Comprehensive Plan from 2008, where in the very back of it...
Because you have to have public hearings on it.
I was just curious if they've seen that.
I'm not sure which document you're talking about exactly, but they have seen the prior comprehensive plan from 2006.
Because it was a whole list of the things that the community got together and, anyway, I was just curious. So that's what this is about?
So that's what this is about, is them saying, you know, this is something we can do. Because right now, they don't feel like they're doing anything, and they wanna do something to help the community. And so, that's what they said, you know what, let's hold a special meeting, because they didn't wanna wait a whole month, they said, let's get started on it, let's start coming up with ideas, let's invite the public, what does the public want, you know, to see for the city? And just try to come up with a couple of statements that explain what they might want for the community, and then they would bring it to you guys as Council, and you guys mull it over and morph it, so...
Is this, what's his name again? Ed?
Fred E. Vander.
Fred E., is he gonna be at that meeting?
No, no. This is just, I mean, because he doesn't know Vator. He just knows that that's a plan that has worked at other communities that he has worked in, so that was his suggestion. Is without any guidance and common goals, then how can you know what decisions to make?
Okay. Do you want to hear a comment?
Certainly.
Who's invited the meeting on? Is that the Planning Committee?
Yep.
The ones that didn't show up tonight or the last few times? Same people? I was curious, being honest, and maybe they have some happy things. You guys have invited them several times, and they just haven't shown up.
Yeah, that's true. So, maybe this'll give them something to show up for. So...
Thank you very much.
I support it.
I appreciate that.
Go for it. Let's try it.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for letting me go back to that.
You're welcome. Thank you for doing it. All right, now let's dive into our official business items. Item one, Council to consider Park Board appointment. You have a letter in your possession. I know this is typical, I would inform you that you're all aware that one of our Park Board members, Tucia Calista, has to be released for family reasons. I think I predicted that that family reason would resolve itself, and sadly, it did. You've probably heard of it. And so, but nonetheless, she would still like to take a hiatus, sabbatical of sorts, as she deals with all of the particulars of that family event. So, with that confirmation, I've identified an individual who I think you're most acquainted with, her name is Stephanie Montgomery, is not here tonight, and she knows that you'd be considering this nomination. But she has other classes that she had to attend tonight that she thought would be of most value, I won't get into predictives, I think some of you know.
She was at our council meeting last, two weeks ago.
Yeah, she's not missed, she's very, she just had one class tonight that she felt like she would like to be in. She asked specifically if I should go ahead with her nomination, and I felt comfortable in doing that. But as you all know, she's very civic-minded, and very intelligent, personable, and enthusiastic about serving on that board and helping contribute to the betterment of the community. So, I'm comfortable submitting her name to you for your confirmatory vote to serve as a member of the City of Vator Park Board. Any thoughts?
I make a motion to accept Stephanie Montgomery to the Park Board.
Wonderful, thank you. So you've heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve the confirmation of Stephanie Montgomery as a member of the Park Board. Do we have a second for that?
One second.
Seconded by Fiona. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. She will be delighted.
When will we be discussing the poll's position? Soon? Okay.
Yes. Yep. Wait, do you have a comment? Member, take it ahead.
Question, how long is this appointment for?
It's not a set...
Whatever she wants to...
It does have a set term, I can't remember.
You know, that's a good question, it varies depending upon the functionality, for the most part, but I forget what it is.
I think it's three years.
Three to four years.
Yeah, I think it's years.
It's probably four.
It's four years, yeah.
If you go sort of out the...
With all due respect, my experience is that if anybody makes it past two years, it's a story. Well done. So it's not then a real issue, I can tell you. All right, next item.
I just ask for general information here.
You're free to ask anytime outside of council meeting, too, as well. Council to consider Resolution 14-2018 for utility billing software agreement. That's the issue that we brought up at our last council meeting, you recall. So, Jill, would you like to add further clarity to this resolution?
Well, it's the same, it's the same contract that was presented at the last meeting. They, let's see, they did not update the removing of the SQL program, so I drew a line through it there. I talked to him about it, but he did not give me an updated version. So he did approve the removal of that cost, he did verify what they anticipated the travel expenses to look like. And I put my recommendation in here, which will be to just go ahead and use the funds that are in the sewer reserve fund, or that, no, what, excuse me, let me restate that. The city has budgeted to transfer $35,000 into the sewer reserve fund this year, and I am suggesting that we just go ahead and pay this all at one time. The amount that, the difference between what they expect us to pay immediately and what they're willing to have us spread out over time is so small that I don't think it's really gonna be of a huge benefit to us to do that.
Would you repeat the first of your conversation where you said, the budget?
In the budget right now, we have a plan to transfer $35,000 into the sewer reserve fund, which we do that every year, it's in the budget already, and the amount varies from year to year, depending on what our budget looks like. But right now, $3,500 is scheduled to be transferred at the end of the year into the reserve fund.
Thirty-five hundred?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thirty-five thousand.
You got my full attention there when you said thirty-five thousand.
It is thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
That's what it is, yeah.
Am I losing? What am I doing?
Yeah, thirty-five thousand. The reason that we have that, the amounts transferred into the sewer reserve fund is because the loans that we have right now, and anticipation of loans that we may need to get in the future, the ecology, Department of Ecology requires us to have a certain amount of money in reserve. So, since I've been here in 2010, we've started putting money away into the sewer reserve funds to meet those requirements. For loans that we already have, that it was already supposed to have been happening, but it hadn't been, so we've got a bunch of catch-up to do, plus in anticipation and knowing that we're probably gonna have to get some more loan funding in the future. And so, we're building that sewer reserve fund, and we've been doing that for several years. So, the amount set aside for this year is $35,000. I believe $5,000 of it is set aside to go for mechanical replacement of parts and things like that, and then $30,000 is supposed to go in the loan reserve amount. My suggestion is to decrease the $30,000 that goes into the loan reserve for this year by the amount of the cost of this, and just get it paid off.
Excellent.
So, last week, someone mentioned that, you know, have we been saving? Well, we have been. And that's partly what that reserve is for, is for emergencies and things that we know we're gonna have to replace in the future, and that's why Ecology wants us to have that money in reserve, and that's why it's part of the loan requirements that we have, reserve funds. So, that's what it's for. So, yes, we have been saving money over the years.
We're up to about $240,000.
I believe that's correct, yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
So, that's been part of the accomplishment.
Is there taxes included, are taxed on these types of things?
Oh, that's a good question, you know, I haven't taken that into account here. I'm assuming there are taxes, because they're a Washington-based company, so they're in-state, so, yeah, I always saw that when I did think that there would be taxes on the software and...
Okay. We'll check into that. But we have a member of the public who'd like to make a comment. Council, do you want to hear it?
Has the sewer fund been paid back the money you took out for rebuild yet?
Not yet, we're still in the process of that.
That's not supposed to happen yet. It's not scheduled to happen yet, we can talk about that at another, that's a different topic, but...
Is that the same fund?
It is the same fund.
Absolutely. So, but that's a good question, because we're monitoring that closely. And contrary to some individuals' perceptions of things they're perceiving as anticipated.
Is that $10,000 out of this 35 that was originally scheduled?
$10,000 is out of the 240. Yeah, it's up to $10,000, it's, right now...
Right, right, $3,000 or something.
Yeah, I think it's gone up to in the $4,000 range now, but...
Did you have a question? Actually, I do, but I was...
Yeah, I got a little cross-spirited prior there, too.
At the last meeting, Joe, we talked about the fact that there are less expensive programs, and you kind of explained a little bit how it would probably all turn out to be about the same cost, and it was all said and done by having two different, could you kind of go over that again?
There are other companies that offer municipal financial software and utility billing softwares. And they're not, they're not, there are quite a few. I mean, they're not, it's not, like you can just go out to your local store and buy what you want, but they are, and they're all expensive, I mean, they're all in the thousands and thousands of dollars. Some of them are a little less on a yearly basis, but in this particular case, there are two, there are two software packages we're using right now. One's the utility software, utility billing, and the other one is for the city municipals. And we already bought this company's city municipals' software, we already use the thing. So we're just gonna get, we're gonna update that and get the utility billing software that's compatible with it. If we went with a different company, we'd have to get rid of the software that we already used for the city municipal, toss it, that we already bought just a few years ago, and then replace everything. So the software that Jill is familiar with using, she would have to be subject to using something different. And also, this company is fairly local in that it's Spokane, Spokane, is it correct? Where the other, most of the other companies I've found are on the East Coast or the Midwest. And so, these folks can come here and do hands-on training where the other companies can't. And so, and really, this is probably the best package that we have accessible to us right now. It's gonna be the least amount of training that's gonna be involved, the folks are close, we have a working relationship with them, it's probably the best one. And it's like I said, some of the ones might be less expensive, but it's not, we're talking hundreds, not thousands.
Thanks for clarifying that.
I've looked into it, it frustrates me, to have to spend this money, much money on software, it really frustrates me, but it's what a city does.
Well said, and it is frustrating for Jill and for Tammy. But I think it's probably the number-one frustration that we've seen in the last two years, aside from the water line breaking. But that's John and Bill. Okay, then we await the council action, I believe, on that agenda.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution 14-2018 authorizing the mayor to execute the attached professional service contract installation, training, and software assurance of utility billing software with Vision Municipal Solutions LLC substantially as written and selecting the one-time payment option.
Okay, I heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shai to approve Resolution 14-2018 as read with the one-time payment option. Do we have a second for that motion?
One second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. Any additional commentary?
I would like to wait until budget, I mean, say this, I would like to wait until budget, I would like to, I'll just say that, I'd like to budget it in for next year.
Okay, that's a thought. We need a quorum of a three-vote majority for this to pass. Are there going to be any ramifications if the Council doesn't pass this this evening, as far as you being able to function with the current system and the way it's malfunctioning?
First question is, don't we just need a majority of the council members who are here?
I was thinking you'd have to have three, five, which...
But there's not five here, I'm gonna three.
That's a good question.
My understanding is that we only need a majority of who's here, but I, that was my understanding. As long as nothing else goes wrong, and that's where we're at with this, is that we need to do it as soon as possible, in my opinion, we already have parts of it that are not working and we cannot get to work, and we're having to do workarounds to make it happen. I don't know when the next Microsoft update is gonna come and make it not work on the other computer, you know what I mean? It's just, nobody knows.
Man, if approved tonight, when would you be getting new training, new software, and et cetera?
He anticipated in the next 30 to 60 days that they would be able to get out here and do it all, definitely before the end of the year.
Okay, so we've still got a couple months.
Understanding the budget and the need, as I personally do, I would strongly encourage the Council to move ahead with this. It's not if, it's when, and I'm very comfortable myself understanding the strategy of that budget, for getting the funds, it's a safe, best...
My pain is every time money is mentioned, sewer is mentioned at some time, it's painful to me.
But the system is used for the sewer.
The sewer's gonna buy it because it's the software.
I guess I understand that, but I just... The sewer is the only one that can't afford it, because it's strictly a sewer utility.
I think you have to look at it like a pump. If one of the, if the aerator breaks down at the sewer plant, we have the reserve fund to go buy another one. The software is just another tool that the utility uses, and that's what the money is there for.
When and if we get the water back, it will use that same software so it can buy into what the sewer's already paid.
Personally, I have confidence in Joe, if Joe says this is the best package, and I have a tendency to believe that it's the best package. Now, am I thrilled that it's coming out of the sewer money? No, but it does make sense, sewer, sewer building, milling, sewer money. No, but it does make sense, sewer, sewer building, milling, sewer money.
It just can't be paid for any other way. It has to be sewer funds. We don't have a choice.
Okay, well, that's why we have this discussion phase. Matter of motion is still on the table. Any other thoughts? We do have a member of the public here, so would you like to hear, give them the time? Go ahead.
Question, now that you're pretty much committed to this, are you going to use the two-year payment plan, the three-year, or the five-year?
The motion was the one, the immediate pay.
Oh, one easy payment, huh?
One easy.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion submitted by Mr. Schei, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you for that. That's unprecedented.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
I always thought that was going to break one more time and we wouldn't get any utility bills.
Doesn't work that way. We just have to do it by hand. Wouldn't that be fun?
Now we get to address the trees.
Oh, man.
I'm waiting for you to get to this subject matter.
Okay.
And show and tell.
All right. Council would consider the tree selection for A Street.
Oh. We're not going to do the payment, we're on three.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm waiting for another one.
Yeah, bark up, no, that's the council tree selection.
You know what? We could, it was a long topic. It was part of what... If I was going to get a tree, I would get the eastern red bud. However, if I was a business owner, I would not want the eastern red bud in my front door. So I would like to hear from one of the people who has property there to see how she feels about having a tree like this in her front door.
I like the pink.
Well, you're going to get that one of the seasons.
I like, that's just spring.
That's spring.
I like the pink.
I think they all change colors, don't they?
It was all four colors, pink, green.
This is your season.
But the maple doesn't.
The tartan maple does not have, does not pink. You see that little inset down here, that little white flower in the springtime, I believe?
It just starts off green?
Yeah. It spends most of the year being green and then turns red. One of the things that Kelly had mentioned, and I'm surprised she didn't mention it to you guys here, was the thought of doing, of alternating, doing both trees, doing, you know, three of one and two of another. And then you would have some kind of variation come. I don't know if you would be interested in that, but I thought, oh, then you've got even more color combinations going on down there.
That would be pretty in the fall.
Yeah, that was just a thought. You can get the best of both worlds.
She just wants pink.
I think that's pretty, all the different colors.
I think the trees we had down there, they were white in the spring, weren't they? They had white buds in the spring?
Little blossoms.
Yeah.
I don't care which one, but I've got to tell you that Pastor Durham, his conversation with me would go for the pink.
Thought he just wanted something that changed.
He wanted something for the seasonal.
I'm okay.
I think the mix would be nice. Alternate, alternate the trees. I think that would be nice. Would you be okay with the white flowers?
Can I have the pink one in front of ours?
They're all going to change to pink.
And I'm willing to have my husband dig the hole. He's got a 12-inch auger. If this pink one goes in front of ours. If it doesn't, well then, start digging.
You're done. Oh, we do have a representative.
Well, just like the cherry trees did, they'll sprout from the bottom.
They'll need a little, they'll need a little...
Brow.
Little cut.
Because they have those little helicopter... And they're a pretty dirty tree.
Yeah.
But I don't care.
Okay, we're back to the eastern red, red buds one. Is this a vote?
Yeah.
You can vote tonight, or you don't want to decide, you don't have to. Are we going to dig these right away?
Once you decide, the city administration will carry out the will of the council. And we have got a timetable, but it's good to know that we have a potential volunteer to help. We have to be mindful of the grass that's there. We certainly don't want to jeopardize that, but it's going to have to be impacted where we call it that.
You have to have a tractor. You have to have a tractor out there to dig it.
Well, yeah, but we don't want to impact it any more than we have to.
My husband has, it's a tractor, so if that's going to dig it out, it's going to tear it up.
Parts of it.
My girlfriend owns a nursery, so would you like me to call and see what kind of price she can give us?
Absolutely. And council, if you want to decide how many, because we have $500, and we're talking about five trees, do you want to say?
Wasn't that what this map was?
That's a map of the, what was there previously? She was just showing me distances and how far apart they were, just to give you an idea what it looked like before. Can I make a comment? I don't know if anybody has thought about... One thing I've thought about is there, when we had the previous trees, there were some people that weren't happy with those because they weren't cared for. They weren't properly trimmed, and they didn't look pretty. They kind of grew crazy, and I think part of the problem is, is that nobody on the city staff knew anything about how to properly care for trimming. And that aspect hasn't changed. So my concern is, has anybody thought about what's going to happen when we do get these trees in? And how are they going to be cared for so that they look nice and stay nice? So it's not just a waste of...
It's not a part. It's not a part, so...
Mr. Durham. Mr. Durham.
Yes.
Tracy Durham. They're his trees.
They're his trees.
Or one of his volunteers, please. Well, I think we could address that down the road.
Okay, well, I just thought in the selection process, that might be something to consider. Depending on, I don't know if there's a difference in how you would care for the trees or, you know what I mean?
What's it going to be?
Let's, okay, so...
Pink or green?
Pink.
Front page.
Okay, I heard unanimously, Texas. Front page, eastern red bud, but it is...
Five, five plus.
As many as we can get for 500. But healthy size, not 10. So you'll call source? Okay, yeah. Any comment?
If that spread has 30 feet, you're going to have to plant them that far apart or they're just going to be...
12 feet is the recommended.
Spacing?
Uh-huh. It's, and the thing where you're spacing, 12 feet apart.
That's probably a minimum. I imagine that's a minimum.
Yeah, and given 200, 10 feet, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
And if, in fact, you do keep them pruned, it definitely won't mind you.
Certainly. My soul's overpouring with envy.
We have one last comment on the top.
We noticed when we were down there at Walmart selling donuts that they were trimming the trees this summer or spring. And those trees have been there about 12 years. And they're just a medium-sized tree because they cough it every year and it still scraps out.
So proper.
And they kept them to a small size in their parking lot.
There are people who know how to do that. Okay, it'd be the challenge of the city to maintain them properly. Well, all right, then we've decided. So be it. We'll be in touch. Okay, last item for council to consider, Barcot pay request number three. So, ready to roll up their sleeves?
We are. I have a show and tell. I would like to, please go to the very last page on the Barcot thing. Line item number 15 and 16. Kind of, it says topsoil type C, $5,000. Seeded lawn installation, $4,700. Okay, everybody impressed with that? This is our friend. Now, when I plugged him out today, I'd like to observe, look at the size of the stalk. And this was a small one. This was not one of the largeness. And these little things are going everywhere. I have a problem with this. I think those folks need to come back, fuck all of these out because if we let this go and this gets mowed, this is going to spread all over everybody's. Wherever they take those riders, if John takes that, he'll take this down to Warden Park.
What is that?
This is the weed that's in that pot.
Well, that's not pigweed. I know pigweed is what I see, but that's not.
That wasn't, and that wasn't growing there. We didn't have any of that before.
We had none of this, and it's only in the new spot.
So that, that was in the seed.
It was in something. I don't know if it was the dirt or the seed, but I'm just, you know, $9,000 worth of, we get a new problem here.
My thinking was that we could maybe sniff it at the ground level and then just...
I think it needs to be pulled out. Look at the roots.
But if you pull it out, you're, I tried that because I'm obviously as alarmed as everybody else. You're disturbing about four to five inches of the grass seed. It hasn't matured enough, but I know that there are some herbicides that will eliminate broadleaf plants in grass, but I think it's too...
It's too, it's too stock. It is huge to establish now. It will spread.
Grass isn't big enough to, I think, to withstand.
Right, to make, to make, yeah, so...
The goats down there, something.
Are you trying to be funny? I've been watching this all week, and this is getting bigger.
You see it every day. How do I buy it? Often enough.
Suddenly. It's, it's not working. It's not working for me.
If we tucked it out when they were about an inch tall, we would be talking, but you can't walk on that.
I don't think weed and seed is going to do anything to that. I think the stalk and the roots are too... That's my show and tell, guys.
So...
So it was the answer.
Topsoil or it was in the seed, one or the other?
One or the other.
So your suggestion is that we go back...
Why don't we contact these folks and say, can I go here and look at this? And, and I guess the phrase I always hear, which irritates me, it's just vader. Okay, this is a, this is a phrase I hear regularly. And I don't want, I don't want that little landscaping project out there to, to look like that. I'd like for it to look a little bit healthier without the weeds.
I have, I had some questions as well. It was related to the construction. I know we were talking about some issues with the cement work that was done down there. And this is nearly the remainder of, of the payment to them. Is that not correct?
All the concrete work is included in the payment. They still have not been paid and won't be with this.
Okay.
You see the concrete, it's all blanked out on that right column. We see items 18 through 21.
I was looking at the whole back portion.
31 and 32, those are all concrete items that have not been paid.
I see.
Supposed to be out tomorrow to do some or all of the repair. That's to what they're supposed to be fixing.
I see, okay, that's what we're going to say.
Would it be Barcot, do you think, that would handle the topsoil and seeded lawn?
I'm assuming so. I don't know if they hired a sub to do that.
They, they subbed it out because I watched them, spraying the grass.
Our contractor's with Barcot, so that's who we deal with. It's up to them to address it with there.
Have we paid them for that yet?
I don't remember if that was included in the prior payments or not. I think it was part of, it's part of this one. I think it's part of this one.
I think it is, too.
Well, I'm certainly not averse to pointing out the problems. I think we could certainly do that, if we want.
Absolutely.
So we'll do that.
Could we address that, please? Thank you.
We, could we approve this minus the landscaping work?
You can do whatever you want. I mean, but that?
Yeah?
Yes, yes, I want to get...
I mean, that was a lot of money. That was, that was $5,000 for, for them to do that.
Well, it's $9,000.
You can buy, you can go buy a bag of grass seed.
All day long.
So it needs to be golf course out there.
I was thinking sod rolled down at least. I mean, something here. Well, that would be the price I would think for sod.
Yeah, exactly.
You know? And sod installation got zero.
So, okay.
So anyway, I, you know, I'm all about approving this, with the exception... I move to approve the Barcot construction pay request number three in the amount of $47,833.16 less. Item number 15 and 16, topsoil C and seeded lawn, lawn installation.
Okay, I heard that motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve the Barcot construction pay request number three in the amount of $47,833.16 minus items 15 and 16 on page one. So do we have a second for that motion?
I'm sorry, guys.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Fantastic, well done. Okay, now, we don't have item five, but we do have public comment.
Yes, we do.
Oh, you're going to withdraw? Okay.
Who do we have?
Cindy Ratcliffe, she drew.
Ah, okay. With that, we'll consider this meeting adjourned at 8:08 PM.